So, welcome to the People's Inquiry, first day hearing into the impacts and effects of toxic chemicals and poisons on our people, wildlife and environment. We'd like to start today's session off with a karakia. So I'd like to welcome Hira Hunapu O'Callaghan to turn on her microphone and share with us the karakia for the day. Thank you, Hira.
Tēnā koe, tēnā tātou katua. No mai piki maharamai katoa katua. Ta inui tātou, just by our hearing. E iomatau ko tātou he hau, mo te hau ora, miti ora nga, o te iwi katua. Ngā kārehe katua, ngā ngara katua, ngā manu katua, ngā ngarehe katua, ngā wei katua, ngā rōngoa katua. Čakina to tātou faia a papa tuanuku, Čakina aranginui, Čakina atangaroa. Arahina mātou, Čakina mātou to tātou tamariki katua. Hau mee, hui e, ta ekie.
Thank you very much, Hira and Stephanie. So I'd like to start today with a bit of an introduction about the inquiry and then we'll introduce our committee that have been working on this inquiry for a number of years. And then we'll ask our commissioners to introduce themselves. So let's get started. So, welcome to the first day of this three-day public hearing into the impacts and effects of toxic chemicals and poisons on our people, wildlife and environment. My name's Asher Anderson and it's with great aroha and respect that we welcome you all here today to this inquiry hearing where over the course of three days, we will hear from more than 20 survivors, advocates, researchers and scientists on the impacts of chemical poisons. This will include chemical injury, legacy poisoning and contamination, human and animal rights, the Treaty of Waingi, Ta'au Maori and much, much more. I'll first share some information about the running of the hearing and then I'll hand over to the organising committee and the commissioners to introduce themselves. So, we'd like to let you know that this hearing is being recorded and will be publicly archived on the People's Inquiry website at a later date. The schedule of speakers for the hearing can be found on our website. We'll also do a brief overview each day before we begin. Chat, the chat function for people attending the hearing as observers is switched off. Hira from our committee will share links and information with you through the chat, but it will not be available to the public. And this is to maintain our focus without interruptions and to ensure a safe and respectful forum. If you have any questions during the hearing, you can ask them in the Q and A and if we're able, we will answer them. Otherwise, you can contact us through our website or our email address, which Hira will be posting in the chat for you. It's important that we take regular breaks throughout the day, a short transition between each speaker and then a 10-minute break between every two people. There'll be a one-hour break at lunchtime so that we can all step away from our screens and rest our eyes, stretch and have some kai. If listening to these testimonies prompts you to want to share your story, we would like you to go to our website and email us through contact@peoplesinquiry2020.nz. The links will be posted in the chat. Many of the issues that will be brought up during this hearing are related to serious harm, physical, mental and emotional harm. It's not easy to share such experiences and it's not easy to listen to. So if you need someone to talk to, look in the chat and Hira will post links to support and advocacy. We are a citizen-led inquiry that is not government-funded. We rely entirely on the time and expertise of volunteers, including the commissioners. If you wish to support the work of this inquiry with a donation, please go to our Give a Little page. Any support for our work is welcome. Speakers, when it's your turn to speak, we'll invite you to share your testimony with the panel of commissioners. We will allow the Zoom settings to change so that you can turn on your audio and video to begin. If you wish, you can also screen share to show images or a presentation. Make sure you let our committee know about this beforehand. Technical issues, as with these kinds of things, there are always technical issues that come up and we will do our best to deal with them as they might arise. Please make sure you have a stable internet connection so that your speech can go smoothly. But let's not worry, let's just do our best and get through it as best we can. We'd also like the speakers to know and those listening to be aware that this inquiry accepts no responsibility for what's shared. These oral testimonies are the responsibility of the speakers alone and as such, it's important that they ensure accuracy in their kerero. So we ask you to pay attention to that. At its heart, this inquiry is about creating a safe and respectful forum for everyone who wants to share their experiences without judgment and with a compassionate listening ear of our commissioners. It's very important to us all that we maintain a respectful forum for this public hearing. We know that sharing our personal stories can be difficult and emotional and we need to be sensitive to everyone's needs and wellbeing. We also want this hearing to be a safe environment for all ages. Please be respectful at all times and refrain from any bad or derogatory language. If at any point during the hearing, anyone feels the need for additional support, we strongly recommend talking to a professional. With this in mind, we've made a list of suitable helplines and other mental health services on our website, which will be linked in the chat. Just remember, you're not alone. So with that out of the way, I'd like to welcome our committee. The organising committee, I'll ask them to introduce themselves. We've decided to go in alphabetical order and I'm Asher Anderson, so I'll go first. So my name's Asher Anderson, I live up here in the Bay of Islands, Fongaroa area, in the beautiful Far North. I came to this kopapa a number of years ago and like so many of us, it was because my own community was going to be impacted. So it's a long journey and I have my own submission and I have my own spot. On the last day, on the Saturday, I'll be sharing more about that then. But for now, I'd just like to say that it's been a privilege to be a part of this organising committee full of brave and dedicated women who really understand the importance of the changes that we need to make. So, thank you very much. I'd like to pass over now to Hannah. Hannah, would you switch on your mic, please, and briefly introduce yourself and tell us why you're involved in this inquiry?
Thank you, Asher. Hi, everyone. And I would just like to acknowledge Asher because, basically, I came to this because Asher and the Flor and Fauna Organisation many years ago. But basically, I've been here, done this before, 15 years ago, along with other members of our executive, we set up a People's Inquiry into what was then the impact of the aerial spraying for the painted apple moss in West Auckland. And quite frankly, 15 years has brought a huge change. And even, I'm getting too old for this, but it's, you know, having to do this as an online hearing is so different from a physical hearing. But it is a new way of doing things and it means that the most important thing is that we can hear from so many other people all around the country. And that's what I'm looking forward to hearing. And it's lovely to be here as part of this inquiry, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. I'd like to ask Ursula, would you switch on your microphone and share with us?
Hi, everybody. Tēnā kouta katoa. Lots of you already, I can see the names in the attendees list. I know a lot of you already. So I'm by trade, I'm a teacher, an adult educator and came to New Zealand about eight years ago now and was shocked and horrified really to see the contradiction to that green, pure, 100% pure, clean green myth that, you know, even as a, I'm ashamed to say, even as a critically thinking academic, I had no idea until I lived here just how bad it was. So what a successful PR campaign that is. And that's one of the things that's in my submission is how, you know, the reasons why that is so successful as a PR campaign. So yeah, so as an educationalist, that's what raised my awareness in terms of the learning resources that are printed by the Predator Free New Zealand 2050 etcetera organisations. And when I looked at the, as an academic, as I looked at the so-called peer-reviewed articles, I realised how flawed they were, not only in the methodology but in their conclusions, how deliberately misleading some of those articles were, you know. And that sort of, that triggered me to investigate more and the more, as lots of you already know, the more you learn, the worse it gets unfortunately. And I'm still learning today. One of, one of the things I'm just coming to the end of is a Master in Legal Studies at the University of Auckland to try to get to grips with the legal side of this thing, what has actually gone wrong with our environmental laws that are supposed to protect public health. So yes, it's been a very steep learning curve for me over the last eight years and it's been great to find like-minded people who share. You know, we're rare, but we do exist and we share a determination and a commitment to make a change in whatever way we can. So, kia kaha.
Thank you, Ursula. Hira, would you turn on your microphone and just briefly introduce yourself and why you're involved in this?
Tēnā kouta katoa. No mai piki maharamai katoa katua. Ko Hira Hunapu O'Callaghan toku ingwa, no ngātihine ngāpui aho. Noreida no mai piki maharamai katoa katua. I'm working in a, I'm currently working in the area of healing. I come from a background of social work, counselling, therapeutic, I'm a trained counsellor. And I also have worked in the area of traditional Maori rōngoa and plants. I was taught by the old people. English is my second language. And so I come from a world of, that was very much close and aligned to nature. So that's the perspective that I come from, nature within people, nature within our environment. And from that position, I mean, from that pristine position, I'm able to see the stark contrasts, if you like, of what has been introduced into that pristine environment and why it, it needs to be healed and restored back to its natural state for us to all coexist in a healthy living environment that our tamariki and our mokopuna in future generations will be inheriting. So it's a great honour to be part of this wonderful committee. We've been through many challenges last year with COVID and I think this is an opportunity, at least we can allow that through these times, the animals can be animals and enjoy themselves and live their lives and families can spend more time together. So I see, I always look at things in a positive perspective. So I'm just here as a guide and to be able to listen to the people coming forward and to, it's a great honour to be able to listen to the experiences that you've been through and to hear your voices, which need to be heard. It's time that your voices are heard and that the just, the healing and the justice takes place. So it's been an honour to be part of this committee and it's a great honour to be able to listen to everybody who's going to be speaking over the next three days. Noreida, tēnā ngāmahi katoa katua, katoa katua, ma takitaki mai. Many greetings and welcome to all those who have attended and are joining us today. Ngāmahi.
Thank you very much, Hira. Steph, would you like to briefly introduce yourself and share with us why you're involved with this kopapa?
Kiaorakatoa katoa. I'd like to echo what has been previously said and my background has been in education, psychology, music and I'm an independent celebrant. Recently trained in transition through crisis and change rituals. Now, we are in a state of crisis and change and what this inquiry is about is hearing all the unheard voices. And so I'm actually, it's been an amazing journey and I'm really happy that we've come to these days. Very grateful to the commissioners who have come on board this waka and all the people who are joining us over these next few days. We are about change and I often make a parallel with the campaigns against pesticides and poisons and toxins and contamination with the nuclear free campaign. And back then, we were actually listened to. And thank goodness, there was a wise judge who delayed nuclear power 10 years and then all that happened, Three Mile Island and Chernobyl. And so, but what's happened with the last few decades is there's some trends that you'll hear more about over the next few days that have been disempowering and shutting people out. So this inquiry is about hearing those voices and thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the committee. I'd like to now introduce, well, ask our commissioners to introduce themselves and we are so grateful for your involvement, so thank you very much. I'd like to welcome Catherine. Catherine, Professor Catherine Irons, would you please briefly introduce yourself and just share a word or two on why you're involved in this inquiry?
Tēnā kouta katoa, or more in a tātou. So yeah, you're not hearing.
Sorry, I had a headset plugged in. Start again. Tēnā kouta katoa, more in a tātou. Obviously, that was something I should have figured out earlier. You put your hand up.
It might be a little bit loud as well. Is anyone else, do you want to just put it down a little bit?
It's just automatic, isn't it, the microphone pickup?
Okay, it's very strong, but that's fine.
I understand further away. Yeah, it's just, it's one of those automatic video cam microphone combos. So yes, I'm a law professor, I have been for more than 25 years and teaching environment, a mix of environmental law and indigenous rights for that time. But I come to this from my work on the legal side of pesticide regulation, looking at particularly approvals. My next topic, and I've said for years after I looked at that one, I think it was 2016 or 2017 that was published. So it seems like a long time ago. But I added to my list spray drift for that because that's something that's not regulated well in New Zealand. And I'm really interested, I'm interested in the legal solutions, whether it's looking at, you know, individual ACC to compliance monitoring enforcement by councils or whoever's got the responsibility for this. Unfortunately, it's dispersed in the society and our system. So there's my, there's where I come from, why I'm interested in it. From the law side, I know that you have to know the facts. So here, we're just here to listen. I see this as me listening and learning to find out about the facts on the ground from people who have effects from these kinds of chemicals, toxics generally, it doesn't have to be pesticides. And then after, we just sit and gather the information and well, I personally like to think of what are the legal types of solutions? But obviously, I'm just one of many and we've got a good range of expertise to think about all the different types of solutions here. So I think the committee particularly, without the wonderful organisation behind this, you know, I wouldn't be sitting here. I would not have organised all this. So I'm really, I feel privileged to have all the organisation behind it so we can then just focus on what we're good at. Certainly in my case. Thank you very much and I look forward to hearing from you all.
Thank you, Catherine. Professor Tom Kearns, would you please turn on your microphone and share with us?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I'm Tom Kearns, I'm right now living on the Oregon coast in the US. So it's a sunny day out there. I retired about 10 years ago from teaching philosophy for 45 years or so. So that means I got to read about and study about and teach about the most interesting things in the world. And then about 20 years ago, I got exposed to some pesticides and became chemically sensitive and what one researcher calls toxicant-induced loss of tolerance. So if anybody's had that happen to you, you know that it takes a huge toll on a life. So I researched about it and began giving public lectures and then wrote a book called Environmentally Induced Illnesses: Ethics, Risk Assessment and Human Rights. Because this was, it seemed to me it was compromising people's human rights to have this much environmental toxics. So, and I think it may have been that book that got me invited by Hannah to be a commissioner on the 2006 inquiry. And then, since then, my interest in human rights and environmental stuff has just deepened and strengthened. I helped organise a People's Tribunal on Human Rights Fracking and Climate Change. So about three years ago. And so one of the things I've become really aware of is how challenging it is to step up before a microphone here and speak, give your testimony publicly about things that are very personal. I know how distressing, how challenging that can be and how much courage it takes to do that. So I'm looking forward to, and I feel a lot of gratitude to all of you witnesses who will be coming forward and telling us your stories. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Dr Muriel Watts, would you please like to switch on and briefly share with us?
Tēnā kouta katoa. My entree to the world of pesticides was as a naturopathic practitioner, treating people who'd been exposed to pesticides and especially the local council's use of 245T and 24D on the roadsides of Waikiki Island. I got a bit frustrated with that and decided it was not much point, being an ambulance at the bottom of the cliff. So I set about trying to do something about it. That was more than 30 years ago. And so for 30 years, I've been working to address the adverse impacts of pesticides on people and the planet. I did a PhD in ethical pesticide policy, there was such a thing, I think. Published five books, numerous monographs and papers and made numerous presentations to UN conferences and meetings. In New Zealand, I've been a member of numerous government committees, ministerial committees on spray drift, the pesticide board, which was the predecessor to the EPA and before that Irma. And so, and so many, so much involvement with councils over the years as well. I managed, also have worked in the organic sector and I managed the establishment of New Zealand's Small Scale Organic Growth Group Certification System, Organic Farm NZ, and currently have a small biodiverse farm on Waikiki Island. I'm now also Director of Science and Policy at Pesticide Action Network Asia-Pacific, the Asia regional hub of the entire pan-international network. And I represent that whole network of about 600 civil society organisations at UN conventions, agreements committees, all on the management of pesticides and that's the bulk of my work now. So and over those years, I've seen considerable progress and international recognition of the impacts of pesticides and a willingness to move on to more ecologically based ways of growing. Still masses of way to go, a lot of room for improvement. I see greater willingness to acknowledge human rights issues and pesticide things and I see greater willingness to acknowledge the wisdom of indigenous people and their skill in producing food without environmental destruction. And I look forward to Aotearoa, New Zealand catching up with the rest of the world. And I'll just, I'll just finish with a little saying I found the other day that I rather love. "Toitū te marai atana mahuta, toitū te marai atangeroa, toitū te tangata." If the land is well and the sea is well, the people will thrive.
Thank you very much, Muriel. And I'd now like to welcome Hema Wihongi to give us a brief introduction. Hema, would you switch on?
Tēnā kouta, tēnā tātou katua. Takamahi tūa tahi ki mātou, mātou kaia karakia. Ki kitea tūa nana nei homai namea katua. Itiaki mātou, atata katua mo te nei mahi. So thank you so much for the opportunity to come here. How I arrived at the, was by being invited by Hira, but my mum, Dow Wihongi, was one of the previous, a former commissioners for this inquiry. And so I got involved, I had an interest, I guess, in toxins and pollutants in the environment through my undergrad studies. And I did surveys on mercury mines, abandoned mercury mines in Northland and very concerned about the impact on the flora and fauna and also people, our local hapus that were directly impacted by that. And it's, it's interesting that sometimes the information that's available and the facts that are there aren't necessarily ready for, to be consumed by the communities. So sometimes you don't really want to hear some of these facts. And so I feel very honoured to be able to listen to and witness some of the court or today and the next three days. And I'm also very grateful to be part of the, part of this collection of wonderful proactive and activist. And so I hope I can contribute the best I can and noreida, tēnā kouta, kiaorakatoa.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. So time is our most precious commodity and we would sincerely like to thank you, the commissioners, for your crucial role in bringing this inquiry to life and to acknowledging the huge amount of commitment and additional work that this requires of you as volunteers. So on behalf of us, thank you very much. I'm just going to speed along things a little bit now, just to catch up on our time. So warm welcome to everyone, attendees, speakers, committee and commissioners. We hope that, you know, we know over the course of these three days, we're going to hear a lot of powerful, powerful testimonies. We'd also like to acknowledge the people who wanted to speak but were so unwell that they actually physically couldn't do it. We had a lot of people who were in that situation. So we'd just like you to all know that this is being recorded and that you can, you can watch it at a later time. So I'm just briefly going to bring up the outline of the agenda for today. It doesn't include a full list of all the speakers, but it just shows when we'll be having breaks. So if you can see here, day one, so we'll start listening to submitters immediately after this. So from 10am till 11:40, there'll be a couple of short breaks in there as well. Then we will have a one-hour lunch break at 11:40 and then we'll get back into the afternoon session. I'll be sharing facilitation with Ursula, she will take over for the afternoon session. And then once we're finished, we'll have some closing remarks and sum up and Steph will help us to close the day. So what I am going to do now is I'm going to ask the committee to please switch off your cameras. And I'm also going to switch over our first speaker, John Levers, from an attendee to a panelist. So John, if you're there, I'd like you to please turn on your video and your audio.
Hi, Asher.
Hi, Asher. I don't seem to have video.
Okay, if you just have a look, and usually it's in your bottom.
Oh, there we go. Start video. There we go.
All right. So just before we get started, I'm going to, could we have the other commissioners pop their videos back on, please? So before I ask John to start, hi, John, welcome. Very nice to see you. What I'm, what we're going to do is I'm going to let the speaker start. And then, when you are about halfway through your time, I'm going to turn on my video again, just to give you a hand signal that I'd like you to have two minutes just to finish what you're saying. And then we will leave that remaining time for the commissioners to ask questions. Now, when there's one minute left in the question time, I will put on my video again and just give a gentle signal of it's, there's one minute to wrap up. Okay? So, welcome, John. Really, really glad to have you here. And we're very, very, very keen to hear what you have to share with us today. So the room is yours.
Oh, good morning. And firstly, I'd just like to thank the commissioners for giving up their time. I mean, this is such an important issue. I got involved just over three years ago when I nearly lost both my dogs to the spraying of hycane on my neighbour's property. They sprayed hycane. The next day, all my dog stood was roll around on their lawn. And they both became very ill eighteen hundred dollars later at the vets. And we ended up using homeopathic, something homeopathic which seemed to help. And I found two eels that crawled out of the creek with what appeared to be chemical-type burns. And in a pond, on one of the ponds on my property, I had a family of mum and dad and nine ducklings that I became quite close with, and they were all dead. So I set about to find out what had caused this. And to be honest, I'd never been that green in my thinking before, or, you know, I was an airline pilot, I had a boat. Wasn't exactly the, the most environmentally friendly person. And when I found out what we have been bombarded with on a daily basis, I've devoted my, basically, but the last three years of my life to this full-time. And what I've uncovered has alarmed me to, it's cost me over a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. I paid for the reassessment of the chemical hydrogen cyanamide, hycane. I get a lot of threats from the industry. And it's not a particularly nice place to sort of stand up against these guys because they have a lot of power. I have been lied to continuously by people from the EPA and other government organizations, councils. They at every turn will cover up, dismiss your concerns, and the frustration is immense. So you probably listened to my testimony and the more detail. So I wouldn't like to sort of cover that so much because that's available online. What I would like to discuss more today is what I've uncovered and what's going on here in Northland. The kiwi fruit industry in Northland is absolutely exploding. They plan to triple production in the next five years. They, kiwi fruit is not suited to Northland. In fact, the new varieties, the gold, the red, et cetera, they were being grafted and designed to not require hydrogen cyanamide, which is an acid which burns the bark to give the plant to simulate that it's had a frost. I think it's five hundred chill units or something you need to get that even bud burst and things. So what that says is the kiwi fruit shouldn't be grown in the far north. It should be grown in areas where these chemicals are not required. Unfortunately, we have plenty of water up here and we have good volcanic soils, which is good for the growing. So they trick nature by using these chemicals. And unfortunately, us as near neighbours, those in the community suffer for the immense profits of a few. Just to give you an example, kiwi fruit is the highest profitable crop per hectare of anything in New Zealand. So somebody growing gold, last year, they received about a hundred and seventy thousand profit, not income, profit per hectare. So there is no excuse not to fit in with the rules. So that's what I'd like to talk about a little bit more is the rules. So we all sit here very concerned that we don't seem to have any protection. Firstly, I'd just like to show you this. This is my neighbour's spray plan. Note, each one of these is how often it's sprayed. There are three pages of it. That is one year for one orchard. And it just goes on. And now, if you Google the SDS safety starter sheet for these chemicals, they have things like lethal to the unborn child. They have, and I am aware of RSE workers working in these orchards after these chemicals have been sprayed and pregnant woman in these orchards. They are not warned. In fact, the growers don't care. Their only interest is getting the work done and getting the product on. And quite frankly, it's frustrating. We have absolute evidence of people getting chemical burns. They've been working in these orchards well before the re-entry period is over. So for hydrogen cyanamide, it's five days. I've seen them in there the same day it's been sprayed because they have to get the pruning done, they have to get the, so they're just seeing people as just a tool. You know, there is no respect. So let's talk about what's in place to protect us. The industry and Grow Safe, they have produced a New Zealand standard. So the standard has been put out by the industry, all right? Not the EPA, the industry. And the standard is NZS, New Zealand Standard eight four oh nine, the spraying of agri-chemicals. Now, the first thing I'd like to point out is if you Google this document, you won't be able to find it unless you pay two hundred and I think it's two hundred and forty dollars I had to pay for it. How can a New Zealand standard not be accessible by the public? Now, I can guarantee you, the average grower isn't going to go and spend two hundred and forty bucks to find out what he should be doing. On that document, all down the side is a, if I send it to anybody, I am breaking copyright rules and I can be fined. So they don't want this document out there. Now, the document, if you look at the RMA, the minimum a council can apply is the New Zealand standard. The New Zealand standard for the spraying of agri-chemicals is NZS eight four oh nine. Now, the regional council, by law, has, I know this isn't very clear, but this is section six point one four, methods of implementation in policies of spray drift. All through this document, the New Zealand standard and all its appendices, sorry, it's not easy for you to see, but I can send this to you. It's all mentioned right throughout the council's regional plan. So when I found this, I thought, wonderful, it's in the regional plan. They have to implement it. Oh, no. They cannot implement it because they're under-resourced. And there is so much pressure from the industry that they choose not to implement it. Now, there are basic things that I know for a fact are implemented in other parts of the country. People in Te Puki refer to the Northland kiwi fruit growers as the cowboys up north. We have no shelter belts. We have no buffer zones. We have kiwi fruit planted next to rest homes. We have a huge forty-five hectare orchard just gone in, directly opposite a school where young minds are learning. And if I can go back to the amount of chemicals that are sprayed weekly, on a weekly basis throughout the season, it is criminal at best. Now, as I say, as I've said, I have spent a fortune on this that I really cannot afford. And Catherine, it was interested to hear you're a lawyer, and I would like to take a a enforcement order in the Environment Court to force the councils to implement NZS eight four oh nine, which is the minimum. But the legal counsel I've spoken to has told me that's going to be at least fifty to seventy thousand. The industry will jump up and down and tie it up. You could end up for two hundred thousand. I can't afford that because the industry will band together and drag it out like they have. We have another friend who took a similar case, went on for two years, and him and his wife have spent most of their retirement savings. And the judge then sided with HAWK New Zealand because they are powerful and they get the QC's and the top barristers. And they will throw endless amounts of money at it that the average person like myself cannot. You just can't fight it. So this inquiry is so important, and the document that is produced by you commissioners is so important for us to be able to, if we do take legal action, is to have that kind of backing. I recently wrote to Mr. Simon Upton, for those of you that aren't aware. He is the Parliamentary Commissioner for the Environment. I sent, I think you've been given the information I sent to Simon and possibly his response, which basically confirms what we're saying, that it's not good enough. But even the Parliamentary Commissioner for the Environment cannot force the councils to meet the requirements. He can make recommendations, but the problem is, all we're fed and all the, the government departments are just as guilty. We are fed lip service. I had meetings with the CEO of NZKGI, a senior member from Zespri. They came up, they viewed the issues we've got in Kiri Kiri. And their response to me was, this is shocking. And I have the letter that, yes, there is much work to be done in Kiri Kiri. What's happened since? Nothing. Because there is no will from the growers. And although the EPA gave them self-regulation, there is nobody, there is nowhere in Zespri or NZKGI that actually has a police-type department. So nobody is policing the growers. So it is anarchy, if you like. And Northland is the worst. And one other thing that I'm aware of and done a lot of reading on, and it's particularly bad in the States and certain parts, is aquifers getting poisoned because all these chemicals have to go somewhere. And Ash has given me the two-minute call, so I guess rather than me rambling on, it would be quite interesting if the commissioners have got any questions or would like any more information, I have a heap. So please, if you've got any questions, I don't want to go over time.
Thank you very much, John. I'll just take my video off now and let the commissioners go ahead with their questions.
Yes, if I may start. John, thank you very much for your testimony. And thank you for the incredible amount of time and resources you've put into this, trying to stop a poisoning of both you and the environment and everyone else around. I'm appalled by the number of sprays that have been used in Northland. It's shocking. Especially without the implementation of this, of the Grow Safe standards and all the other standards. I have some questions for you about, a number of questions. Actually, I noted that you said you were interested in taking or getting someone to take a legal, now, what was it you wanted to take?
Enforcement order in the Environment.
Okay. So that was one question. One of the questions, so basically, my question for you was, what else, apart from enforcement order, do you want to see happen? What, what will help? And you and everyone else in Northland in this situation?
Well, I've got to watch my language, as you've said. But the EPA needs to grow a pair. The EPA are an absolute disaster. Dr. Frif, I think he's on the, you know, must be working for HAWK New Zealand because they, at every opportunity, will dismiss every bit of evidence you've given them. Just, just a quick example, I had WorkSafe here last year for the spraying of hydrogen cyanamide and the year before. And WorkSafe's report, which I can share with you, was the application was unsuitable and unsafe. And the, the senior inspector that attended, that was horrified at what he witnessed, said, we're going to have to take this further. As soon as he got back into the fold of his management, nothing happened. And the last four years, they have sprayed in extremely windy conditions. The problem with hydrogen cyanamide is they can only spray it in a short time period. So wind rules, all those rules go out the window. It's just a matter of, we've got three thousand hectares to spray. We have to do, you know, five hundred hectares a day and bugger the wind, you know? We are not considered as, as the public, as, as part of that equation.
So, sorry, I'll just take another moment. Obviously, reassessing hycane again would be helpful. But that actually isn't going to solve the problem, is it? Because there's so many other pesticides being used.
Look, hycane isn't as bad as some of the others. Some of the heavy metals, you know, hycane's water-based and for us humans, it goes through our system in forty-eight hours. But the heavy metals, the, you know, they are just, they get into your liver, into your organs, and they sit, you know? And the toxicity just builds. And I'm noticing health issues, you know, increased headaches, the longer I live here. And they just don't care. Nobody cares. You get lip service, oh, this is very hard for you, but that's as far as it goes.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I really appreciated all the documentation you gave us. It's really impressive. It shows eloquently how much EPA and industry cares about you. So one question is, if you were to successfully get an enforcement action enforced and policed, would that do the trick? I mean?
I don't think so, Tom. I don't think so. Because who is going to police it? That's the big problem. The councils don't have the resources. And the EPA have given the industry self-regulation. And I saw a document recently that was EWE consultation, and they were treating EWE like idiots. They, they actually had in the document, we think a ten-to-fifty metre buffer zone would be enough. What do you think? They were such leading questions. They weren't telling them. For an example, Tom, in America, on the label for the chemical hydrogen cyanamide, hycane, it says you cannot spray this within three hundred yards of a waterway. It's attributed to the high tide mark, et cetera. On the New Zealand label, it just says this cannot enter a waterway. So I thought we were a bit better than America when it came to environmental issues. How wrong was I?
Yeah. Well, another question I had was about, I mean, just what's called shelters, which I understand to be a line of evergreens or something along that.
Correct.
How much difference would that make? I mean, I can't imagine that that would be, make very much difference.
So, Tom, I've got a study I can send you. It was done by Lincoln University here. And they said that unless, I forget, it had to be several meters above the height of the spray cloud. It would have to be. But the problem is, a shelter belt like that, if you look at, that's the shelter belt, here's the spray cloud, it hits the shelter belt and it gets pushed up and over. So really, shelter belts don't work. The, what we need is a buffer zone. Buffer zones are the only thing that work.
Or what we need is less spraying. So, I mean, just, I don't want to take more time. But one question I have is, we're going to, as commissioners, when this is over, issue a report of some sort. We haven't yet talked about how, how we're going to address that. But what kind of things would you like to see in a report like that?
I think what's really important is acknowledging, acknowledging that the situation is critical. Right? Like, let's not sugarcoat it. It's critical. Secondly, it needs to be addressed that the government agencies that are there to protect the public are failing. Whether that be a council, whether that be the EPA, whether that be the Parliamentary Commissioner, or whether that be the Omsbudsman. I've written to them all. And so nobody will deal with the issue. And that is the problem, Tom. We need somebody that has the power to make change. But we have nobody in this country that will put their hand up and say, hey, that falls on our plate. You know, we need to deal with this. It's always duck shoved off to a council, to the Ministry for the Environment. And, you know, it's, if you saw the paper trail I've had, you would, you know, I mean, it's just.
I'm already.
I mean, I come from an aviation background. I was an airline pilot. If we operated aircraft... If we operated aircraft the way they operate these chemicals. You know, nobody would get on an aeroplane because it wouldn't be safe.
Thank you.
So, thanks for that, John. Obviously, so I'll try and be relatively brief. I, my comment, oh, I've been trying to think about answers. Because I did read your voluminous set of materials, and I thought they were really helpful, especially the Simon Upton letter. I agree totally that he is concerned, he writes to the councils and they do nothing about it. But that isn't really all he can do. So I was trying to think of what the range of avenues for action were. And I thought WorkSafe was a good one. But you say they've taken it back and done nothing, but there's still a comment about. I mean, if the one thing that, for example, the Labour Party and their internal policy has been concerned about, and that's workers. And jobs and safety. That's the one thing that Andrew Little is very dear, is very dear to his heart. That kind of thing can have a political traction, even if not necessarily a legal traction at the moment, certainly. But all of these things are on. I should say also, there's a national aquifer monitoring program. You mentioned getting into the aquifers. I've already put, flagged that as a research topic with another organisation. Of someone going through regularly the aquifer monitoring data to see what kinds of things are coming up. Especially, and they do monitor for pesticide and residues and things like that. They're not doing streams, though. One outfit in New Zealand has monitored, an Artago university research group has monitored one set of streams in New Zealand. And they found an alarming cocktail of pesticide residues in there. But we need to do the rest of them. And I thought that stream that you identified on your maps, and the one with the eels and things. Is a classic candidate for a research project I've suggested. And I think they're gonna try and get Mike Joy to do it, actually, for various reasons. But anyway, I, so there's lots of practical things to do with testing, monitoring, making things visible. But a lot of the difficulty seemed to come down to how to determine the damage. Like, for example, they say with your dogs, you know, and your $800 cost to fix. I mean, that actually. Is theoretically remediable by a nuisance claim. Like, your neighbour is not allowed to poison your dogs, even by accident. And if they have, if they damage, if there are activities on their land, and, you know, it can be floods, it can be poisons, it can be anything. If activity on one person's land causes damage on the neighbour's land, they're liable for that damage. The difficulty.
But the onus is on you to prove it.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why, so all, and you're not the only one, nearly all of the complaints about spray drift. Come back to this question of proof. Oh, like, you know, your hair fell out, well, prove it was the pesticide, you know what I mean? Prove it was that chemical cocktail or whatever. And so I thought there's a lot of, I think some, that's not my area, Mary will be better than that. And others. But is there something that can, I don't know that an onus of proof. Would shift, which is an interesting question. Because, you know, there may be a case where we know things are so bad. You know, a chemical is so bad, therefore the onus of proof should shift. There's an assumption. But, you know, there's a legal argument there. But I don't know if there's some proof medically that could be a set of guidelines for how to assess, you know, these things. Anyway, that's a science question. But I just wondered from. Whether you'd come up against that, the proof issue, the damage, prove it was, like you said, you saw the eels, they looked like they had burns. I mean, if you take photos.
I could have killed, no, 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 I could have killed those eels and sprayed them with something. How can I prove that? This is what you are up against. There is, the answer to your question is, there is no political will to fix this problem. Because it's a $3 to $4 billion industry. And if it was a $200 million industry, they'd fix it. But because it is such a big percentage of GDP for a small country like New Zealand, the last thing the government's gonna do is upset them. And who suffers? Us.
Yeah, it does sound like going against, like growers who are not even. Having the shelter belts and the buffer zones and they're letting workers in within the five hours, you know, the five days, I should say, sorry. That kind of thing. It sounds like it would be easier to go after individuals who are clearly flouting guidelines.
You'd be going after every grower in Kiri Kiri, you know?
Yeah, yeah. No, I know, I do. I do know that. And that sounds like a political, anyway, so, yeah, I've. That sets, obviously it sets off more questions and problems than answers.
The simple analogy.
Valuable.
The simple analogy, Catherine, is something Lee Bramwell, who's been working with me on this, she's a journalist. And her analogy is, it's like telling the travelling public that the speed limit's 100 kilometres an hour. We trust you'll stick to it because we don't have any police. So we just expect everybody to follow the speed limit. Well, it's exactly the same in this.
Yeah, I thought that was a great line. Thank you. Yeah. So I'll stop now. Him, you might have something.
I do. John, thank you so much for your testimony. It was very, very interesting. And I wondered about some of the work that we're doing at the moment at. Restoration and remediation work at Puu Puu. It's sometimes, is it, it's different in philosophy to how Maori wants to see things done. So they want to continue to have their mine used for tourists. And, you know, it's a walkway, that kind of thing. And it really needs to be covered. And the whole thing needs to be covered, in my mind. But alongside that, it's the restoration of the communities. And so, just as a thought there, has any hair sampling been done around any of the. Orchards or, because that can really get down very quickly to what's going on.
Problem is, there have been people that have done that, and there are other people that have sort of gone down that road. But it comes back to that political will. You can have all the evidence in the world. But unless you have the financial ability to enlist a pretty good barrister that can stand up against these buggers. Because any action you take, they will just lawyer up and you just don't stand a chance. You know, the average person just doesn't have the resources. And, you know, I do okay. But I can't afford to keep throwing this amount of money at it, you know?
Right. Now, thank you so very much for your efforts and, you know. And thank you so much for what you've shared with us.
The only thing I ask from the commissioners, just please don't water down your report. Say it as it is. Hit it them hard. Don't leave any room for it could go either way. You know, I've seen some of these reports and sometimes they're a bit wishy-washy. We need to hit them between the eyes with a sledgehammer and tell them how bad it is.
Thank you very much, everybody. Our time is up now. Thank you, John. Really grateful for your sharing today. We're going to now take a minute break, and then we'll be back with our second speaker, Joe Cristaldi. I can see you there in the attendees, Joe.
Great. All right, there we are. Can you hear me?
Hi, Joe. Yes, welcome. All right, everybody. Shall we restart? Everyone's here? Okay, great. So I'd like to welcome Joe Cristaldi, our next speaker, to join the panel. So thank you very much, Joe. It's nice to see you and thank you for being here today. Would you please start us off by briefly introducing yourself and beginning to share your oral testimony? And as before, I will turn on my video again and just give you an indication when we're about halfway through. And then I'll switch off because we'll transition to questions. And then I'll pop in again right at the end, just to let you know when it's time to wrap up. So, Joe?
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. My name's Joe Cristaldi. I have a background in biodynamics and organic horticulture. And I came to New Zealand in 2016 for the lure of it being a really organic and clean and green place. Which unfortunately I had a rude awakening. I came and I lived in the South Islands for a while, and then I moved up into Kiri Kiri. In July of 2017. The property that I live on is about three acres and surrounded by two sides by kiwi fruit orchards. The shelter belt is old. It's probably 25 to 40-year-old. Type of pine trees which give no protection at all. The spray just comes right through. All the protection is about. Three to four metres up. So it really doesn't do nothing below. You can see right through it and see right at the key word root, there's no protection at all. So I came up here, I was beekeeping at the time. And after about over six months, I started experiencing these crashes where I just couldn't get out of bed for a day or two. And this lasted. I usually started about once every couple of months, and then it progressed to once a month. I went to the doctors numerous times and they did blood tests and they could never find anything. But what I did notice is I would go back to the States, pre-covert, of course. And I would be back there for maybe one time for like three months and the other time for four months. And I was perfectly fine. I didn't have any crashes or anything. But then when I came back, the crashes started occurring again. Where I was just so fatigued, it was even hard to get out of bed to go to the toilet. Eventually, I went to the doctors and they did further investigation. And this was probably after about 10 visits. And they determined my thyroid levels were off. And then eventually I was diagnosed with Hashimoto's disease. So, which I'm on medication for now. And there's no cure for that at the moment. Which is, your body attacks your thyroid, pretty much, your immune system. So that's kind of where I'm at now. We do have a bore water, a little well water. And we did have that tested, but you can't test for specific contaminants. Or you can, but it's extremely expensive and can't really afford that. So in the meantime, I'm kind of gearing towards, it's probably the. Kiwi fruit sprays coming over because they do spray hycane over there. They do let us know when they're gonna spray. But they say, get your animals away and put them all away. I mean, we have some chickens and have some livestock occasionally, some cows and stuff. And you can't just take a cow and put it in your house for a couple of days. And so anyway, we did contact GrowSafe because we did complain about the sprays. And the shelter belt, they wanted us to pay for half to get the trees topped so they would grow properly. So that's when we contacted GrowSafe and GrowSafe came and said it was inadequate shelter belt. That has happened, but we haven't heard anything yet back from, not GrowSafe, a WorkSafe, that would be. And I did get a hair analysis done. And it showed high in arsenic, copper and lead. In my system. Currently taking some. Remedies, naturopathic remedies to try to delete them from my system. But since I've moved up here, my health, I'm a pretty healthy person, has plummeted. And it seems when I leave from here for an extended amount of time, I feel a lot better than when I come back. I get sick again. So that's pretty much concludes what I have.
Thank you very much, Joe. I guess now we can open up the floor for some questions. So, over to you commissioners.
I'd. Tell you, Joe, that. Very similar thing happened to me. And I thought getting enough tests would do the trick. And or getting a diagnosis of A, B or C would do the trick. And or some treatment of this and that would do the trick. And it just. The only, and I think the clearest description of a situation like this is toxic induced loss of tolerance. Which means you get exposed to toxics and you used to be able to tolerate them for smaller doses. And now suddenly you can't tolerate them anymore. So, and then the challenge you have, I mean, you've got two big challenges. One is that shelter issue, which just seems to me wouldn't make hardly any difference at all. And the other is proving causality. You know, that's the classic problem in environmentally induced illnesses. Proving what caused it. Because industry or the regulators can just continually claim that, well, we don't know if that caused it. It may have been something else that caused it. So. So that's, I worry about continued exposures like that. That's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah. You know, hopefully WorkSafe will mandate some type of proper buffer zone. But the kiwi fruit is less than three metres from the boundary. And I believe it's supposed to be a bit further than that.
And are you getting sprayed as frequently as John just told us?
Yeah, they're one of the, I'm not, they're not, they don't, there's three top ones. Kanui, Sika. And there's another one that are the top three kiwi fruit growers up here in Northland. And I'm in Kiri Kiri, if I didn't. Let that known. But, yeah, it's, I think it's Sika that has the orchard next to us, which they have many orchards. You know, they just lease them out. And. Yeah, they really don't care. They just don't want to do anything about it. And then they try to put the costs on you. If you want to protect yourself instead of, you know, them doing the right thing.
Exactly.
Can I ask a question, Joe? Hycane is of course well-known to interfere with the thyroid gland. I mean, it's what it does when it gets into humans. So did your doctor, having noticed your history and being aware that you live next door to orchards that are. Kiwi fruit orchard spraying hycane all the time, did the doctor take into account the likely exposure to hycane when diagnosing? Excuse me, thyroid problems?
No, they didn't indicate anything about hycane and thyroid, the link.
Okay, because it seems to me that this, every. Opportunity for there to be a link between your condition and the hycane, never mind all the other sprays as well, which would be causing problems. But the hycane particularly goes for the thyroid gland. And it seems that if you have developed thyroid problems, which have been up there, there's a pretty reasonable. Chance of actually documenting a cause and effect situation in this particular case. Very hard in every other case. So it would be interesting. I don't know if you can go back to your doctor and talk to them about hycane and thyroid and take them some, take them some evidence that. For example, the European Food Safety reassessment that showed quite clearly the impact on thyroid. That was in John's, John Levin's submission. Is it not optional for you to follow that up with them?
Yeah, I can do that. The problem where I go, they go through doctors pretty frequent. So you don't usually get the same doctor each time, but the records are still there.
Yeah.
I just had a blood test for thyroid and I'm waiting on the results from that again, but.
Okay.
But yeah, no, I will follow up on that and see if they can link it to hycane, hopefully. Because that's, like I said, when I left from here for an extended amount of time, I was fine. I never had a crash, nothing. And then when I came back, the crashes slowly started to progress again.
At the very least, if the doctor will acknowledge that connection, you should be able to get ACC. Which will help you to a certain extent, but it also makes it public what's happened. And it makes for a little bit of case history that can be. for um a little bit of case history that can be really useful for other people as well.
Alright, I I will definitely follow it up, follow up on that with my doctor. Thank you for that.
How are you? I'm so, thank you so much, Joe, for your your testimony, and it's um, I'm quite shocked. And I'm I'm very sorry to hear that um of your health problems, especially the Hashimoto's disease, and I don't know what you're going to do about that. Do you is there any, there's no cure for that at the moment, is there?
No, there's no cure for it. Uh they just give you uh thyroxine, which is a, you know, just replaces your thyroid. It's a an underactive thyroid condition.
And my question is, do you know of others in in your uh community that have experienced similar problems, similar issues as yours?
Uh I was recently diagnosed, so I didn't really look into it. I was quite naive about the sprays up here since when I did do some vineyard work, but that was all organic and biodynamic, so I didn't realize that the real nasty chemicals that they used here in New Zealand in the agricultural until just recent.
Oh, I see. Okay. Nice. Now, thank you so much for your testimony again.
Thanks, thanks again. So I guess I'll 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 have a turn. Um yeah, I it's, you're not the only one to have had doctors not believe, you know, or not not try and figure this out. And um uh so it does raise issues for me again, which, you know, to talk to the commissioners about, but um it just makes me wonder, this suggestion of Mariels for advice, uh no, for taking information about high cane to doctors. If we know this is an issue in Northland, um then this might be a matter of going, whether it's to the Medical Council or, you know, something, but to issue uh information, you know, the little one-page fact sheets about each uh chemical, what are commonly found in that area, and you give that to the doctors who know. But again, I don't know personally how you test for them. Is it only, is it hair follicle testing all the time? Is that what it is? Um I don't know how you decide. I gather with high cane, that's that affects your glycol, and one of our other submitters um had tuned to have a not, doesn't process glycol um very well, or maybe that was a different pesticide, sorry, that might not have been high cane, sorry. Um but you know, there are some where you can have a uh an inability to process it very well and which affects you more. And so then you have different kinds of tests. So each pesticide's gonna need a different protocol for to investigate whether you're suffering the effect. So you're gonna need a lot of one-page fact sheets, it sounds like, from the amount of things that they're using up there. Um and in such proximity to other people, which I'm just stunned by this, you know, three meters from the edge and, you know, violates all of the boundaries and the buffer zones, let alone the shelter belt thing. Um so but advice to the doctors, and then the epidemiology, that would be really interesting, picking up on him as comment. Um and this this happened, for example, you know, down south, they suddenly find that um colon cancer is running rampant down there, and oh, that's associated with high nitrate levels in water. Um as and that's the one thing that's gonna apparently uh suggest, you know, make them do something about it. It's affecting the people who are putting the nitrates in the water. If you're, if we can get an epidemiological survey to show that you've got a large number of people, say, with thyroid, then that would actually be really helpful um to say this is not just a one person fighting one slow diagnosis, you know. Um but anyway, so I just, those are more, again, comments that I get from um listening to your testimony and the answers and trying to think about the problem, but if you have any uh if that's triggered any comments from you, that would I'd be most grateful.
Yeah, Curicari also has a uh extremely high cancer rate. Um pretty much everyone I know has a family member, and I never experienced this anywhere before, but the cancer rate up here is really high. Just um everybody I know, someone in their immediate family has cancer. All various types.
I think, can I just pick up on what you were saying? Um and I wondered about um whether there's something missing in the training of um our our GPs and doctors, or, you know, whether that's part of the, that's missing in terms of their professional development, whether that could be something that we add into our report and make recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 other concern here too is a lot of people in a lot of retirement homes are are coming up here, and they get their water from their roofs that go into um and, you know, all this spray just sprays onto the roof, goes into their water systems. I mean, some have filters. I mean, we have a filter, but you really need like a reverse osmosis, which are pretty expensive. Um but just the plain filter isn't gonna gonna take out the toxins, I don't believe. So there there is a big problem up here. There's um, you know, the roofs, elderly people that are compromised with these retirement villages that are now gonna be drinking water that's uh unfiltered and just you know, contaminated with whatever spray lands on the roof.
Well, I guess that's one recommendation that could could be made as well as that that any of the um the uh schools and retirement villages and any other hos- and hospitals in the area or anything like that should have reverse osmoters, filters on their water to take out the spray as a first step, of course, sorry, to take out the pesticides. Of course, the pesticides shouldn't be in the water. Uh but as a first step to protect people and to raise awareness of the problem, that would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, no, that that would be, that would be a good first step, I think, and uh just get some filtration and testing, a lot of testing in the water. There's a see, a school right there. Pacarura, Pacaraca, uh right where State Highway one, and the kiwi's fruit orchard is directly across the street. They're gonna have these little kids out there playing in the schools, schoolyard, and while they're spraying high cane. I mean, it's just uh it's just not acceptable. I mean, to I mean, I'm older in life, which, you know, I I don't wanna see my health deteriorate, but you shouldn't deteriorate someone who didn't even start their journey on life yet.
One of the um, just to add here too, um is, Joe, is that oh, about ten or fifteen years ago, my cousin, um he was quite a keen eela, so he would catch eels in Lake Omaupi, and he found, he told me, he said that he'd taken in uh quite a large eel out, and it had disintegrated in his hands, and he didn't understand why. I said, it's probably a toxin in there somewhere. And so it's it's been, I I I think that this has been a problem for um decades here, and um hopefully we can do something about it.
Yeah, we have some chickens here, and I won't eat the eggs because they venture over. Like, I won't eat the eggs.
Were there any final questions for Joe?
No, but I really wanna thank you, Joe, for for standing up, making the time, coming, telling your story. Uh I appreciate that a lot.
We're a little bit ahead time, ahead of time. Um Joe, is there any, anything else you would like to share before before we finish? Okay, there we go.
Yeah, sorry, I've just got a question, and it's one I also meant to ask of John, but I forgot to. Both of you have mentioned um buffer zones or lack of buffer zones. What do you think a buffer zone should be between uh a kiwi fruit orchard and the boundary of its property?
I think it's spelled out. Um I think it's like it's supposed to be like a seven or I'm not sure, but it's 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 not trees with no protection. And just on another note that uh I did mention about to the doctor that I did live next to a Kiwi kiwi fruit orchard, and they're just um, they seem reluctant to say anything about it being connected to the contamination. The kiwi fruit industry up here is um pretty powerful up here. It's it's a billion-dollar business, and they um, you know, they control a lot, and they, you know, they yeah, they they have a lot of power. They even sent out like little pet, what's that uh high cane is safe in everybody's mailbox, and it said like, you know, just don't stay in there for five days and it's fine. You know.
But do you have a copy of one of those pamphlets that you could submit to us? I'd I'd really like to see one of those.
Uh I think in anger, I threw it out, but I I should have uh saved it. You know, I thought they just had to be able to try to justify them spraying this nasty stuff. Everybody in Curicari should have got one, because they were, I think they were pretty common.
Well, if if you can find one and submit it to the inquiry, that that could be very useful, because that kind of disinformation from the from the industry is something that needs to be exposed. Thank you.
Alright, I'll look into that.
Right. Thank you very much, Joe. I think we we finished for now. Yeah, thank you very much. We're gonna uh have our five-minute transition now, so I'm just going to um check that Lorraine is able to start early if she doesn't mind, and um
There was a comment, um Asha there from um John about um three hundred, what was it? He said a three hundred yard buffer zone. Thought it was quite interesting.
Yes, that's right. Um I I think John had actually found the high cane product for sale in the United States and seen that on the label, the buffer zone was supposed to be nine hundred feet. Um I I would have to check that, but I but I believe that's correct.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that would be sufficient in these situations, and I know I think it's California, they have established buffer zones around schools, which are much more extensive than that, and also in Hawaii. Um if it's a bit, don't, there's similar efforts in Asia to do the same thing, because uh it's not just the high cane problem, it is all sprays as well.
Yep. Um so if it's okay, I'll um invite Lorraine. It's a little bit early, Lorraine, but I hope this is okay. I'm just gonna promote you to being a panelist, and we'll um ask you to put on your audio and your video when you're ready.
Oh, what am I doing?
Yes. Hello. Hi, Rain. Yes. We can see you. Yes, good, thank you. Welcome, welcome to the panel. Um so I'd like to clarify that Lorraine is in Auckland, not in the Northland. She was previously in Northland, but in Auckland now. So just welcome to you today, and I'd like to um, yeah, hand it over to you to briefly introduce yourself and and share your oral testimony. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Hutton. Um I currently live in Auckland, uh Green Bay, Waiteke. I lived up in Koko thirty-six years ago, and I'll excuse my cat every time I'm on the computer. Um I lived in Koko and thirty-six years ago when I was pregnant with my first daughter. We were living in a house truck. Uh we got our drinking water from a rugby field down there. And water to do my washing and stuff was out of a pond from a neighboring property. Now, we didn't find out until after we'd left there, when I started getting a bit sick, that that pond had been um sprayed around the pond with two-four-five T. Anyway, my ex-husband, um he worked for A R A, which was out at Huia in New Zealand, and Waiteke, right? When he was working for them, he had to do a lot of spraying with Roundup. And I became very, very sick. Um and my joints, my joints were swelling up. I could barely walk. I had my second daughter. Uh I couldn't lift her up. I couldn't do up nappies. I went to the doctors, they sent me to, um go away, Bella. They sent me to all these tests at the hospital for um arthritis. Different arthritis sort of checks, Bella. Um and all the checks for arthritis came back negative. So finally, I was put onto someone up in Helen's soul that did testing. Now, I can't remember the testing, but um I had nine different chemical poisons. That was thirty-three years ago. Now, the thing is today, um if I go for a walk near a park and it's got the green spray around the edges of the concrete and the grass, I will get home and I'll be in such agony, I can hardly do anything for a week or two. Um recently, I had a wrist operation, and that was in August last year. And my neighbor, after my wrist operation, my grass under my car had grown long and luscious, and one of my neighbors, when I was able to drive again, she came along and she sprayed where my car was parked. She'd been mowing my driveway and but she couldn't get under my car because I couldn't drive it. And anyway, after after her spraying, um as soon as I get home, it's like I can feel the toxins straight away in my body. Now, it took me a good five months of my feet, blue, purple, black, swollen ears. I could barely walk for five months. So um she knew that I was highly allergic to Roundup spray. Um I've got all my neighbors in my neighborhood are happy sprayers, as I call them. And I worry about my darling cat because she wanders around the neighborhood. Um also, I'd like to mention, as well as the two-four-five T, in two thousand and two, I think it was, or two thousand and three, when they done the the painted apple moth spray, that also made me very sick. And it made my old cat get real weepy eyes. So it's not only affecting me, but also my animals. And um I wrote something on on the page yesterday, I think about about all our bird life around here. My neighbor at the back, he throws out slug pallets. He loves to spray his garden edges. Um I've had to make myself sort of fences to try and stop that spray from affecting me. And but whenever anyone sprays, it's like, yeah, it's like I'm after the rhythm, all my joints saying, and I'm unable to walk. Now, I've been to my doctor about it multiple times. Um the doctor thirty-three years ago was very understanding of it. I couldn't even lift my arm higher than that. And um now I can. Um but he was really good, my old doctor, but he's now passed away. Now, the doctor I've had for the last ten years or so, and I've been letting him know every time that that these toxins affect me. Now, he didn't want to believe me. Um I asked him if I could go and get tested for toxin sprays in my system, and he told me if I was to do that, it would cost me thousands of dollars. Um I think it was, who was it that saw me years ago? Oh, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, but um yeah, the one that I saw years and years ago that got me in to get my blood tests done. That was free back then, but now, because we have to pay thousands of dollars to get to get tested for these chemical sprays, I'm a beneficiary. I'm actually on an ambulance benefit due to accidents. Um but I do like to potter around in my garden when I can, and um but yeah, if anyone sprayed, that's uh I'm bedridden for four days after that. Weeks after that, um when she sprayed under Weeks after that, um, when she sprayed under my car, well, that was almost five months. Or it was five months of barely being able to walk at all. And my feet just started coming right when I had to go to the pain clinic. And I was made out at the pain clinic to be a hypochondriac. Um, I'm saddened that my friend couldn't be here today due to COVID because she's been a witness of everything that's gone on for me for the past few years, or the past ten years since I've lived here. And, um, she was absolutely horrified at the spray under my car and how it affected my feet and not being able to walk. I went to my doctor and he's now retired also. Um, but yeah, he thought it was a big scam and he was trying to say that it's other things wrong. And he wouldn't put me on to, oh, it was Dr Tizard I saw years and years ago. Um, but yeah, my doctor would not send me in to get blood tests. He would, yeah, he was totally anti it. And yeah, he made me out to, to be a liar practically. And, um, so yeah, I'm sort of stuck because I am very broke. I can't afford to move. I love my home. I love my garden. Um, I've been here for eleven years now and, um, but I've got one, two, three, four happy, happy spray neighbours. And so when each one sprays, which I'm actually dreading springtime because the sprays are going to start coming out now. So it's what the council sprays around Auckland, um, in the parks. Now, I hear children crying a lot and little babies can't talk. But I've seen the two little children across the driveway from me. And their parents are happy sprayers and these children were sitting in the dead grass of where the spray had been sprayed. And it's like, my eldest daughter is thirty three now, she's still got her baby teeth. My husband, my ex-husband, when he worked for the council, we had the old wringer washing machines. And so I was washing the clothes and pulling them out and putting them through the wringer. And that's when I got really arthritis. Now, in two thousand, it would have been about two thousand. Uh, because I left him when my youngest daughter was two. And then in early two thousand, we tried to make our relationship work again. And I slept with him and all of a sudden, all these pains came back into me. And it was like exactly how I had left him, totally in pain. Um, he was a bit of a controller. He wouldn't let me take my anti-inflammatories. He wouldn't let me take antidepressants. And so I was quite stuck there. I, I had nothing to turn to, so I had to leave him to be able to sort out my body. Um, but now it's like, yeah, it's with the neighbours and the council doing the sprays that I cannot, I cannot do anything to stop them. And I'm currently under an A C C with, with other things. Like, um, I've had a shoulder operation, I've had a wrist operation, I've had a back operation. My shoulder operation was two years ago, but, um, A C C tried to say that it was arthritis in there. Well, it wasn't. The tendon from my shoulder had ripped away. And so since my operation, my shoulder is good. Do I need to break, Asha? Do I need to have a break?
Give you two minutes, um, Lorraine, and then we'll open up for questions from the commissioners.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I just don't know where to turn to. And that's where I found your site on, on Facebook. And even though I'm in Auckland, I wanted to join your group because I don't know who else to turn to about all this. Um, yeah, our doctors, A C C are not, not willing to, to help towards what we go through with these sprays. So, yeah, any questions?
Thank you very much, Lorraine. Um, yeah, I'll hand it over to the commissioners now.
I'm, I'm happy to start this time. Um, no, thank, thank you very much for that, Lorraine. I think that is, um, uh, as you may, I can see Tom's also got his microphone off. Um, so I'll let him to talk about the chemical sensitivity side of things. But I thought that was, um, uh, yeah, certainly, uh, feel your frustration in that. Um, and you're not the only person, unfortunately, as you would have heard even from the previous two speakers. Um, I'm re, so I have read your submission and I'm really curious, the way you tell, when you tell your story. So you, you've been tested, you've had, they, and you said it was blood tests. They found these different poisons and chemicals in your systems. I'm very curious as to what tests. Um, I mean, it said it a long time ago, but then, but if that was on file, why? I'm just curious as to what your doctor thinks, why you either can't get tested again today or why that wouldn't still be affecting, I'm just curious as to why there's a disconnect between then and now. And what, what you found from your doctor.
The doctor who I was seeing recently that retired, um, he was sort of, well, he told me to throw all my tablets that I didn't use and to flush them down the toilet to feed the fish. So he was sure the fish didn't mind. So I was actually horrified with that. I thought he was going a bit senile. Um, but yeah, he, he bluntly refused and told me if I was to go and see the doctor in Auckland Hospital, who would then refer me to the blood tests, that it would cost four hundred dollars or something to go and see the, oh, I can't remember, the toxin doctor. And then it would cost me like thousands to get the blood test done. So it's like a scare tactic from that doctor. Now I'm with a new doctor. So I'm just waiting for someone to spray again and then I'm going to be straight at the doctors. And I'll see what my new doctor says about it. But I have heard via other people that yes, to get the blood tests for Roundup and, um, in your blood system, that it costs a lot of money. I don't have any money. So therefore, it's like, I may as well hit my head on a brick wall. So, yeah, I don't know what, I just don't know what to do.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass it over to Tom. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Catherine. Uh, boy, Lorraine, I can tell you, I sympathise over and over and over with you. Uh, I've gone through exactly what you're describing. And it started twenty years ago and when it's, when it begins, it's, it's absolutely, it feels absolutely hopeless. Because you can't get any help from any medical professionals. Uh, the person you would, the, the specialty you would turn to is toxicology. They don't buy any of this. Uh, low dose exposure stuff. Uh, another specialty you would turn to is allergies. They don't, they'll say, they'll do allergy tests and find out that you're not, that you don't show positive on any of them. So. Um, and yet you're in a situation that feels absolutely desperate and you're willing to spend and do anything within your means, even beyond your means, to, to get something fixed. And, um, so, uh, fortunately, I was in a position where I could research this stuff and spend a lot of time working on it and ended up teaching courses on environmentally induced illnesses just like this. And it turns out that there are, there is a specialty. I don't know how global it is. It's, we've got a group here in the US called the American Academy of Environmental Medicine, A A E M. Um, and, uh, because environmental medicine here, I don't, again, don't know globally. Environmental medicine here is, is a specialty that a person, that a physician can become board certified in. And so you can go to that website, the American Academy of Environmental Medicine, get information and data and ways to address this and so on. I'm, I'm not so much giving you hope as, um, trying to alleviate despair. Um, but, um, so that's one, one source. Um, the, the term is chemical sensitivity. That's the most popular term. It's, uh, got its pluses and minuses. The most clinically meaningful term for this condition is toxicant-induced loss of tolerance tilt. Um, and I can tell you the name of the, of the book that I assigned in this class. There's lots of popular books out there that are written for regular folks. Um, this one is the most thoroughly researched, the most medically respectable book by the most medically respectable researcher and, and clinician on this stuff. Her name is Claudia Miller. And the book is titled, uh, Chemical Exposure, Colon, Low Levels, High Stakes. And the reason it's low levels is because, you know, once you become sensitized, you know, your neighbour down the street can, can spray a pansy and you'll react to it. Um, I've got neighbours who are spraying this, I'm, I'm sure they're going to spray this next weekend. It's still summer here. And so I, I'm not sure how I'm going to deal with that. Um, so I can't really offer, uh, you know, except you're dealing with something that, uh, lots of people deal with and you have to just find each other and, uh, and, uh, find some, uh, and, and work on things together best you can. It's an expensive condition. So people spend themselves down to poverty in trying to do anything they can. And most of it doesn't work. Turns out the only thing that really works very well is to get away from uh, exposures or use lots of air purifiers and that kind of thing. So, um, I'll stop now, but I, I have enormous sympathy for what you're experiencing. It's a.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Rain, I'd like to, um, make a few comments and ask you some questions or make some suggestions, actually. Again, I also thank you for your testimony. I have heard similar heartbreaking stories for decades in this country. It is not uncommon. You are not alone, but I know you feel alone because no one wants to believe you. Um, there are some doctors in Auckland, or there used to be, I don't know if there still are, who do environmental medicine. Um, and I can't, I, I can't identify who they are at the moment because I, I simply don't know anymore. But you may be able to find someone who will believe you and help you. Um, uh, there's no medical solution to the problem. You can't take a drug to make it go away. It doesn't work. The only thing that will make it go away, uh, was two things that will help, is strengthening your own, um, immune and, and metabolic systems and an environmental doctor might be able to help you with that. Uh, and the other thing is to stop or reduce exposure. Now, the only practical thing I can suggest at the moment is something that we've done here on our farm. Because we're a certified organic farm, we're not allowed to have spray drift on our property. And if anybody drifts on our property, we lose certification. It costs money and we can threaten legal action. We don't do legal action because, oh, we couldn't afford it. Um, but you could do something similar with your neighbours. You could write them a letter and say to them, you have recognized environmental chemical sensitivities. Um, could you please, when you are using your sprays, spray when the wind is blowing away from my place? That's what we say to our neighbours. Please put your sprays on when there is a positive wind away from our place. Because just a lack of wind doesn't sufficient. A lack of wind, the chemicals will still drift around. You notice a positive wind away from your place, unfortunately, somebody else will get it, but you won't. Um, so that's something that you can, you, you need to do it in a, in a non-threatening manner, a asking for help manner from your, from your neighbours. And, uh, and it also starts to engage them in conversation about what they're doing themselves and what impacts they might have on their own families and animals. And you're right about cats. Cats are actually never used in toxicological studies because they're far more sensitive to pesticides and dogs, rats or humans are, or birds or fish, actually. They're the most sensitive animals. So you are right to be concerned for your cat as well. So, um, that's really the only practical, I mean, you could ask the council to put you on a no spray register. Unfortunately, that means that you have to maintain the verge yourself and probably one of your neighbours will come and spray it for you. Um, I'm sure you'll hear a lot more from Hannah and later this afternoon about no spray registers in council. So I won't go any further down that line at all, but just see if you can engage with your, um, neighbours in a, in a, in a positive dialogue about it. Thanks, Rain.
Thank you. I actually put a sign up at my litter box. Um, it's a spray-free trespass sign. Um, and I've put ban two four five T, ban Roundup, ban this, ban that. And, um, it's a nice big sign that can't be must. And yes, I noticed my grass was growing out onto the footpath the other day. Now, I can barely dig anymore. I'm only fifty five. I used to be very strong and able to do a lot in the garden or a lot of hard work. But now it's like my muscle weakness due to everything that's happened to me over the years. So I've put that sign down the bottom and I've put the fences at the back. So that means two neighbours are totally aware. I told one other neighbour that came up my side of the lawn spraying the edging of his garden. And I told him, it's not allowed on my property. So he's no longer sprayed, which is good. But the neighbour behind me, he still loves to spray. And it's quite funny because, um, yeah, he's had quite a few cancer tumors cut out of him. And it just makes you wonder why. Now, my ex-husband, like I was saying, he's got bee hives. And he was living out at Bethel's and he was still using this blooming Roundup. Uh, I'd go up to get some honey off him and his legs would be covered in green from the Roundup. And, um, anyway, I was getting honey off him. I've got a jar of it here. And, uh, the taste of it is like, there's something wrong with it. I can't, I can no longer eat that. So, but now he's moved up north and he's no longer using sprays. So, yeah, it's like, I'm quite happy to try his honey now.
It's a, it's a long process of trying to educate people out of it. And although I totally understand the ban, the ban, the pesticide signs at the gate, actually, two four five T is banned, so you can take that one down. Um, and, and dealing with neighbours, y- you have to be as positive as you can and, 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 and not be too confrontational because it just, you get a negative reaction and the other ones are the spray can. And, and that puts you at risk.
Hmm. Kilda, um, Kilda Lorraine, I, I thought, could I just have a couple of, I've got a couple of questions here, um, if that's okay. Where are you? Hi, there you are. Um, look, you were saying that you lived in Ko Koohu about thirty six years ago. And, um, do you think that, I'm just trying to, just interested to see where, um, perhaps your sensitivity started to chemicals. Do you think that came from, um, because you were, you know, what, using the, the pond water? Or was it from the, um, the, did you have, did you say you had tanks or you were?
No, we lived in the house truck. And so, yeah, we were getting our drinking water at the football or rugby field.
Yep.
And we were living up on a farmland and, um, across the road, there was a farm with a pond. And that's where my husband, my ex-husband, would go and get water for me to do the washing, which hand washed because we didn't have a washing machine then.
Oh, I see.
And I was pregnant, heavily pregnant with my first daughter.
I got you. Has there been anything, how's, how, has there been any effect with your children, you know, on your children that you could see or? Has there been anything, how's, how, has there been any effect with your children, you know, on your children that you could see or?
I'm glad that you asked that, my first daughter is fine. Um so she was very lucky, but my second daughter, who's now thirty-three, has still got all her baby teeth. At the back, all her baby teeth, there's nothing underneath. So once those teeth come out, she's not going to get a regrowth, she's going to have to get false teeth.
Oh, gosh.
So I, what, it makes me wonder, has these chemical um things that I've had in my system while I was pregnant with her, um has this all affected her teeth?
That's right, yes, that's interesting, isn't it? And I'm, and I'm very, I'm sorry to hear about your illnesses that you've had, I'm very sorry to hear that. And um and I wish that, um you know, we, we could do more for you and for people that have suffered the same, same issues. And uh but I just want to acknowledge that, um you, you know, your time and your generosity of spirit to come and speak to us today. So tēnā koe fire.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Were there any more questions for Lorraine before we finish? Okay, Lorraine, was there any, any last words that you wanted to share before we finish your time?
I'd just like to say thank you to you all and um yes, I'll keep in, in touch with the group. And hopefully, we can do something to ban these toxins from our beautiful Aotearoa because none of us made this, it's making us all sick. Some people don't realise that, but it's damaging us all. So yeah, thank you. Okay.
I thought I'd make one final suggestion, I don't know if Lorraine knows that, particularly given you've got comments about Roundup, which is glyphosate based. The EPA has, is, has called for submissions just for people to submit, say what is their experience of people using glyphosate? Um and they're trying to collect evidence of that. And I just think that might be really helpful, if you haven't seen that, to just send your, you know, your brief experience about, you know, your chemical sensitivities and what happens when your neighbour spray Roundup. Um that's the kind of evidence they're actually looking for.
I was looking for that.
The EPA, and I, I mean, it may be that um we can put the link to the submissions and how you send it in, in um either the chat or the Q and A. I think the chat's where the submission links are going, aren't they? Um that could be something, I mean, it also could be something that we as an inquiry could collate and send just the ones relevant to glyphosate, I, you know, especially those who have already said, yes, you can make my submission public.
Hmm. Because it's, that's all that's being sprayed around my area now, so that's what is affecting me. And like I say, I'm not looking forward to spraying because everyone's going to be out spraying. So yeah, I, yeah.
Thank you, Lorraine.
I feel for everyone that goes through the same as I do. And yeah, I can't thank you all enough for having me on your panel today.
You're welcome, thank you very much for joining us and, and sharing your experience. And we'll make sure that in our email correspondence, we will include the link to the EPA submissions as well so that you'll be able to see that there. I'm just. All right, I'm just going to switch you back to an attendee, thank you again, Lorraine.
Thank you, bye all.
All right. So that concludes our morning session with our first three speakers. I'd just like to say thank you to our commissioners, thank you to the speakers and thank you to everyone attending and support. Um was there any, anything you wanted to share before we break for a lunch, a lunch hour? Nope, all right, all right, so let's, let's take a rest, rest our eyes, stretch our bodies, have some chai and some water. And we will be back at twelve thirty-five.